Good morning. This is the County Council of Prince George's County, sitting as the District Council. Today is October 21st, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Good morning, Chair Burrows.
Present.
Ms. Blague.
Present.
Mr. Denoga.
Present.
Mr. Harrison.
Good morning, President.
Mr. Hawkins.
Good morning, Madam Clerk, President.
Mr. Olson.
Here.
Vice Chair Urieta. Seven members present at roll call.
Approval of District Council minutes dated October 6th, 2025, is their motion. It's been moved by Councilmember Harrison, seconded by Councilmember Olson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Blague. Is approval of council minutes, I mean District Council minutes? Mr. Denoga. Approval of District Council minutes.
Aye.
Mr. Harrison.
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Urieta. Motion carries seven zero.
Oral argument CSP-23002 Signature Club East, WP East Acquisitions LLC, located in the northeast quadrant of intersection MD-228 Berry Road and Manny Road. Sixteen point nine acres, RMF forty-eight zone, prior MXT zone, requesting the approval of a conceptual site plan for the development of up to three hundred multifamily dwelling units and twelve thousand six hundred square feet of commercial and retail space. This is located in Council Mad at District Nine. Appeal by date is 9/4/2025. Action by date, um, November the third, 2025. Approved with conditions from the technical staff on 6/26/2025. Approved by the planning board on 7/31/2025. Persons of record filed on 9/3/2025. Alex Votar Esquire, persons of record filed an appeal of the planning board's decision. On 10/14, the applicant filed Edward C. Gibbs, junior esquire, attorney for the applicant, filed a response to the appeal and request for limited remand. I will now turn to the park and planning staff for a overview.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Chair and council members. For the record, my name's Emery Huang with Urban Design Sections. The item in front of you is conceptual site plan CSP-23002 for Signature Club East. This conceptual site plan is for the development of up to three hundred multifamily dwelling units and twelve thousand six hundred square feet of the commercial and retail spaces. This application was approved by the Prince George County Planning Board on July 10th, 2025, and was adopted on July 31st, 2025. The planning board's resolution number for this application is 2025-057. The subject property is located in the planning area 84 and the Council District Nine. The subject property is located in the northeast quadrant of the intersection of the Berry Road and Manny Road East. The subject site is currently located within the residential multifamily forty-eight zones as shown in the image to the right. However, this application is being reviewed under the prior zoning ordinance, and his prior zone is mixed-use transportation-oriented as shown in the image to the left. This map show the topography of the site, specifically the site slopes downward from the northwest side to the northeast side of the property. The subject properties is bounded by two master planned rights-of-way, which are Berry Road classified as an expressway, and Manny Road East classified as a primary road. The subject property is currently vacant with tree coverage. The subject property, um, classifies, uh, consists of Lot 12 and Parcel 1B. It is showing, it is worth noting that Lot 12 was formerly, uh, part three of the conceptual site plan CSP-99050 approved by the planning board in 2000. Lot 12 was approved but for a total of one hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred square feet of commercial space, including ten thousand square feet of office space. In addition, Condition 1G of the CSP-99050 notes the maximum heights of the office structures to be three to four stories. Our parcel B was not part of the CSP-99050. In 2006, the District Council approved zoning map amendment A-9960-C to rezone the our parcel B to the MXT zone from the rural residential zone. Subsequently, the applicants combined both Lot 12 and our parcel B for the subject conceptual site plan as a new application rather than an amendment to CSP-99050. The subject application was accepted prior to April 1st, 2025. Therefore, the applicants elected to have this application to be reviewed under the prior zoning ordinance. The M, the image on the screen shows the relationship between the subject property and the Berry Road and MD, uh, 210 and MD 373, which is Livingston Road. This conceptual site plan proposed multifamily dwellings and the commercial retail uses, which are compatible with adjacent residential and commercial development. The commercial pad sites are conceptually showing to the, to be located in the southern portion of the property, fronting Berry Road, and propose multifamily dwelling buildings to be located in the northern portion of the property. The anticipated building heights of the commercial and residential structure proposed for this subject development generally aligns with the maximum building heights previously approved for Part Three under conceptual site plan CSP-99050. The proposed development also offers additional housing options and opportunity for existing and future residents to patrolize locally. This circulation plan shows the potential and vehicular circulation within the development. The proposed potential circulation is designed to support safe potential access to the proposed buildings on-site and to the off-site sidewalks. This slide shows the subject site outlined in red and demonstrate the tree conservation plan, which is discussed on pages twenty-nine through thirty of the resolution. Ulan clearing is consistent with the prior tree conservation plans approval for the site with Ulan conservation to be made off-site. In addition, a variance to section twenty-five dash one-two-two B1G is requested for the removal of forest specimen trees, which is discussed on pages thirty-two through thirty-six of the resolutions. The planning board approved the conceptual site plan CSP-23002 for Signature Club East, subject to fine conditions, which can be found on pages thirty-eight to page thirty-nines of the planning board resolution number 2025-057. This concludes today's presentation.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, my understanding is that there is a, uh, remand decision that will be before the council, and so we'll have a five minutes to speak to that. I'll turn it over to our People's Zoning Council.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, the applicant has filed a motion for remand on certain issues, and, um, therefore what we'll do is we'll have a five-minute argument only on the remand issue. So, Mr. Gibbs, you have five minutes, and then Ms. Votar, you have five minutes in support or opposition, and then the council can vote on that motion.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could set the clock for five minutes. Want to turn your mic on?
How about that?
Perfect.
Little bit better technology. Thank you very much. Good morning. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, uh, for the record, Edward Gibbs, an attorney with offices in Largo, uh, representing, uh, the applicant here today. With me, uh, Signature 2016 Commercial LLC. I'm not, I, I filed a response to the appeal, which was filed by opposition, uh, in this case. It's lengthy, uh, but I had also included a request for a remand, a limited remand, because this property consists of Lot 12 and our parcel B. And Lot 12 is about thirteen-plus acres, and our parcel B is three-plus acres. And when we went into the planning board hearing, uh, there were concerns raised about the fact that Lot 12 and possibly our parcel B were designated for forest retention. And I felt that during the course of the hearing, we, we never got, there's information in the record, the environmental planning referral, uh, talks about the fact that, uh, prior tree conservation plans showed areas to be in preservation, but then they were removed as subsequent TCPs went forward and as development went forward, because this is a massive development, uh, three hundred and forty-five acres overall in the whole project. Um, and then the technical staff report at page thirty-one and thirty-two dealt with it a little bit as well, and recounted the same thing, that previously approved TCPs, and I think there's as many as ten TCPs approved previously, um, had indicated that even though there was forest retention shown, it was ultimately going to be removed and taken off-site. Uh, and then, of course, the, uh, the applicant's, um, uh, expert land planner testified and said, showing Lot 12 and our parcel B as tree preservation was just a placeholder. That's what had happened all the way through. The, the problem is that the, to me, the issue was a little bit confusing, uh, and a limited remand could, could look back in detail at the prior TCPs that were approved for the overall project when these comments were made and have them expressly addressed. And there's, this is not a real issue, but without further explanation, I wouldn't want it to continue to be an issue, and that is why I asked for the remand. And quite frankly, um, when I read the appeal, I think the opponents asked for a remand about five different times, including in their, in their conclusion to their appeal brief, where they say this case should be remanded to the planning board. So, um, with that being said, I'm not going to go forward any further, and I just think that a remand would serve the interests of all parties here and would allow further discussion, uh, as well as we got back down. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Uh, Alex Votar from the Law Office of G. Macy Nelson, representing citizen protesters. It's nice to see you all today. Uh, we, uh, argue, we are opposed to the remand request, uh, for this reason. My clients have taken time off of work to be here. We have submitted written exceptions, uh, to the District Council. These issues have been fully explored, and we ask that the District Council hear our oral arguments and make a decision after the conclusion of oral arguments. Yes, in some situations and some issues, we've asked for a remand, but there are core issues that could also warrant outright reversal of the planning board's decision. One of those being the, uh, removal of tree preservation areas that, uh, Mr. Gibbs just spoke about. The other critical area in this case is the failure to provide adequate traffic facilities. That is in the record, it is clear, there's no more dispute, there's no need for a remand on that issue, it warrants a reversal on its face. Uh, so, you know, we ask that the District Council give us the opportunity to have our arguments, uh, and then make a decision after the conclusion of those arguments. Another reason we think that's a better course of action, uh, than, uh, with all due respect, my colleague has suggested, uh, is because it would allow the District Council to provide a more, uh, tailored and specific remand order if that's ultimately what the District Council wants to do. There are several issues in this case. Uh, to have a remand on just one issue and then come back and argue all the same issues again, uh, would be a waste of county resources, it would certainly be a waste of my client's time and resources, uh, and I think would be a less efficient process than allowing us to have the oral arguments as scheduled, go through all of the issues that the District Council might have questions about or want to know more details about, and then allow the District Council to make a decision on the record already provided and on the written exceptions already, uh, outlined and submitted to the District Council. Uh, so, for that reason, uh, we strongly oppose a request to remand uh, without going through the oral arguments as scheduled today. Uh, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. This is located in Council Mad at District Nine. I'll turn to Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to refer to, uh, the People's Council, Stan Brown, Attorney Stan Brown.
Um, yes, I've read the file that was transmitted to the District Council, and I'm sure all of the members of the council have as well. The decision of the planning board was forty-one pages. Mr. Gibbs, remand motion was thirty pages, and the exceptions were also approximately thirty pages with exhibits. All of the issues here are intertwined. It is impossible to remand the case based upon a one issue. Mr. Gibbs is correct, uh, Ms. Votar, in her exceptions, requested a remand on all of the issues that she has raised. And in reviewing the record, I would agree, a remand is appropriate, but I agree with Ms. Votar, not on the limited issue raised by Mr. Gibbs. Uh, the case should be remanded for all of the issues identified by the opposition and for the reason identified by Mr. Gibbs. And that's important, because this is a conceptual site plan. As everyone knows, this council sits in an appellate review, and in appellate review, um, the council must be able to rely upon a decision from the planning board that is based upon facts, findings of facts, conclusions of law, and substantial evidence. The record as it, as it exists today, just based upon the arguments of both parties, is inadequate. So, the case should be remanded for each and every item identified by the opposition before the planning board, because when they identified those issues before the planning board, uh, the board did not itemize and specify how they agreed or disagreed with those objections. Uh, the case should be remanded for all of the exceptions identified by Ms. Votar in her appeal, and the case should be remanded for the issue identified, uh, by Mr. Gibbs. Um, the ordinance does require that a remand order come back within sixty days. That is, the planning board must conduct an additional hearing and issue a resolution, uh, within sixty days. Uh, so that would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gibbs, can you please come before, and Ms. Votar, Attorney Votar. Thank you. So, I just, I just want to be able to say this. I'm gonna, um, make a motion to make a full remand, not a limited remand. But I would really like, uh, both parties to work together with the community to hash out any differences or grievances and understanding under the zoning law what is allowed and what is not. But community buy-in is everything. It is everything. And I really like the community and the business developers that are looking to do some improvement on the property that they own, that they work with the community to build capacity that is harmonious to the community. Through a full remand, the community will have an opportunity to participate in that full remand on every issue. And if any, Mr. Brown, can anyone new, once we remand this, anyone new come into the case?
Oh, yes, there were four individuals identified by Ms. Votar in her appeal that were not persons of record, and so when the case goes back, any new person who wants to become a person of record may participate in that remand.
Okay, great. So, more buy-in for community participation then?
Yes.
Thank you. So, um, I just wanted to be able to say that to both of you all. Let's try to get some community support and, and, and partnership, uh, when this case goes before, uh, back for a full remand. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Harrison, seconded by Councilmember Watson to remand this. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Adams Stafford, oh, pardon me, she stepped away. Ms. Blague.
Aye.
Mr. Denoga.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Harrison.
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins. Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Urieta.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. New cases ERR-001, 2025, Hoffman Brothers Towing Incorporated, Hoffman Brothers Towing Incorporated, Hoffman Brothers Used Cars, located at 7808 Sandy Spring Road, Laurel, Maryland, 20707, one point seven-four acres, RR zone. Requesting approval of permitted uses and error. For the validation of permit U14196, this permit previously allowed for an automobile sale lot for the use of used cars and operation of automotive, automobile towing station with storage of wreck car vehicles. This is located in Council Mad at District One. Appeal by date is 10/14/2025. Action by date is 1/12/2026. This is located in the municipality of Laurel. It was approved by the zoning hearing examiner with conditions on 9/11/2025. This is located in Council Mad at District One, and I will refer to Tom Denoga.
Uh, thank you. I make a motion to, uh, have the council review this matter.
Second.
Councilmember Denoga has elected for the council review, seconded by Councilmember Fisher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Aye.
Is that, Mr., excuse me, Ms. Blague.
Aye.
Mr. Denoga.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Harrison. Mr. Hawkins.
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Uh, Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Urieta. Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
ZMA 2024-003 RST New Carrollton RST Development LLC, located on the south side of MD-450 Annapolis Road at 7591 Annapolis Road, Land O' Maryland, four point two-nine acres in AC zone. Requesting approval of zoning map amendment to rezone approximately four point two-nine acres in the neighborhood activity center zone to the neighborhood activity center plan development zone for the development of up to three hundred multifamily dwelling units. This is located in Council Mad at District Three. Appeal by date is 11/14/2025. Action by date is 3/16/2026. Opposition from Amanda Kar, um, Karam. Approval with conditions for seventeen twenty twenty-five from the technical staff. Approved with conditions from the hearing examiner on 10/15/2025. I will now turn to Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, I'd like to defer this item.
This item has been deferred.
Thank you.
No problem. DSP-22001 Remand McDonald's Ager Road. McDonald's US LLC is the applicant, located in the northeast quadrant of the intersection MD-410 East West Highway and Van Buren Street, and on the south side of Ager Road, four point seventeen acres CGO zone, prior CSC zone. Requesting approval of detailed site plan for the development of three thousand six hundred eighty-three square foot eating and drinking establishment with drive-through service on the southern parcel twenty-three, Portion twenty-three. This is located in Council Mad District Two. Appeal by date is not, is 8/14/2025. Action by date is 10/30/2025. Approval with conditions from the technical staff at Park and Planning on 9/12/2024. Approval by the planning board with conditions on 2/6/2025. Sitting as the District Council on 10/6/2025, it was, uh, hearing was held. The case was taken under advisement. On 10/15/2025, the applicant filed, Edward C. Gibbs, attorney for the applicant, filed a request to formally withdraw the DSP-22001 Remand McDonald's Ager Road. I will now turn to Raj Kumar or Stan Brown.
Mr. Chair, um, Ms. Fisher will make a motion.
I will now turn to Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, um, motion to refer the staff to repair an order in accordance to the applicant's withdrawal of the application.
It's been moved by Councilmember Fisher, seconded by Councilmember Harrison. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Blague. Mr. Denoga.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Aye, and I thank the applicant for this action.
Mr. Harrison.
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins.
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Urieta. Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. SE-22002 Remand Stewart Property ESC 8215 Springfield LC, located approximately three hundred and ninety feet southeast of the intersection of Lake Glen Drive and Springfield Road. At 8215 Springfield Road, Glendale, Maryland, twelve point zero-one acres rural residential zone, requesting approval of a special exception to develop a planned retirement community with fifty-seven age-restricted, single-family attached dwellings and variance for removal of forest specimen trees, approximately twelve point zero-one acres rural residential zone, uh, landed. This is located in Council Mad at District Four. Appeal by date is 8/11/2025. Review by date is 9/12/2025. Action by date is nine, is 2/9/2026. Opposition Howard Aldac and Charles Holman. On 7/10/2025, it was approved with conditions from the zoning hearing examiner. On 10/6/2025, sitting as the District Council, a hearing was held. It was taken under advisement. I will now turn to Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to refer the matter to staff to prepare, to prepare, prepare a zoning ordinance of approval with conditions in accordance with the recommendations of the zoning hearing examiner.
This is been moved by Councilmember Watson. Is there a second? I missed it, I'm sorry. It was seconded by Councilmember Harrison. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Blague.
Aye.
Mr. Denoga.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Harrison. Mr. Hawkins.
Madam Clerk, I vote aye.
Mr. Olson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Urieta.
Aye.
Ms. Watson.
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Cases pending finality. In the event the District Council elects to make a final decision in this case, an oral argument will be scheduled pursuant to section twenty-seven dash one-three-one of the zoning ordinance. Planning Board DET-2023-013, Largo Park Lot Six, Lot Five B LLC, located south of the intersection of MD-202 Landover Road, lots for nine point one-five acres RTO HE zone. Requesting approval of a detailed site plan for the development of three hundred ninety-eight multifamily dwelling units with associated infrastructure amenities, consisting of forty-two studios, one hundred and sixty-two one bedrooms, one hundred and seventy-five two bedrooms, and nineteen three-bedroom units in one building. This is located in Council Mad District Six. Appeal by date is 10/30/2025. Review date is 10/30/2025. Eight twenty-one twenty twenty-five, it was approved with conditions from Park and Planning Technical Staff. Nine twenty-five, it was approved with conditions from the Park and Planning Board. Ten six twenty-
I'd like a, um, a mo- motion to waive the council's election review.
It's been a motion to waive the council election review by Councilmember Blagay, seconded by Councilmember Fisher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Blagay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. MJD dash twenty twenty-four dash zero-zero-four Largo Park Lot Six, DET twenty twenty-three dash zero thirteen, Lot B five LLC, located in the intersection of MD Landover Road, Lotsford Road, nine point one five acres RTO HE zone, requesting the approval of a major departure from curb-cut standards in section twenty-seven dash four-two-zero-four B one B, section twenty-seven dash four-two-zero-four B one F three AA of the Prince George County zoning ordinance. This is located in Council matter District Six. Appeal by date is ten thirty twenty twenty-five. Review by date is ten thirty twenty twenty-five. It was approved with conditions from the parking planning technical staff on nine, on eight twenty-one twenty twenty-five, and approved with conditions of the planning board on nine twenty-five twenty twenty-five. I'll now turn to Councilmember Blagay. This is District Six.
A motion to waive the council's election review.
Second.
It's been a motion to waive the council's election review, it's been seconded from Councilmember Blagay, it's been seconded by Councilmember Fisher. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Blagay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you very much. DSP dash two-two zero seventeen, the Herman Apartments Community Housing Initiative Incorporated, located on the north side of Ager Road, approximately one thousand five hundred feet southeast of its intersection of MD four-ten East West Highway, nine point five one acres RS sixty-five RSFA zone, prior R dash fifty-five, R dash thirty-five zones. Approval of detailed site plan for the development of one hundred and forty-five multi-dwelling units with associated infrastructure and amenities. This is located in Council matter District Two. Appeal by date is eleven thirteen twenty twenty-five. Review by date is eleven thirteen twenty twenty-five. It was approved with conditions from parking planning technical staff on nine five twenty twenty-five. It was approved with conditions from the planning board, um, on ten nine twenty twenty-five. This is located in Council matter District Two, and I will yield to Ms. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I move to waive council's election to review.
Second.
It's been a motion to waive council's election to review by Councilmember Fisher, seconded by Councilmember Blagay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Blagay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
DDS dash twenty-four zero-zero-three Herman Apartments, DSP two-two zero seventeen, Community Housing Initiative, located on the north side of Ager Road, approximately fifteen hundred feet southeast of its intersection MD four-ten East West Highway, nine point five one acres RS sixty-five RSFA zones, prior R fifty-five dash R thirty-five zones, request an approval of departure from design standards for the reduction of the standard non-parallel parking size from nine point five by nineteen to nine feet by eighteen, pursuant to section twenty-seven dash twenty-three nine point zero one of the prior Prince George County zoning ordinance. This is located in Council matter District Two. Appeal by date is eleven thirteen twenty twenty-five. Review by date is eleven thirteen twenty twenty-five. It was approved by the technical staff at parking planning on nine five twenty twenty-five. It was approved by the planning board on nine, on ten nine twenty twenty-five. This is located in Council matter District Two, and I will yield to Ms. Fisher for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I move to waive council's election to review.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Fisher, seconded by Councilmember Watson to raise, um, to waive the council election to review. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chair Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Adam Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Bl, Ms. Blagay?
Aye.
Mr. Denoga?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Harrison?
I vote aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Aye.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Harrison, seconded by Councilmember Fisher to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. The ayes have it, we are adjourned. Councilmembers, we will start right at eleven thirty for County Council.